Okay.
Okay. All right, welcome everyone. See you. Thanks for coming. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Search of the Springs Library Board of Trustees. Today is Monday, March 10th, 2025. First item on our agenda is the approval of the February regular meeting in subjective session minutes. Anyone have any questions or comments, or does someone like to make a motion?
I just wondered, and maybe I get them every month, I'm sure, but there's no, there's no attendance?
Yeah, Teri was just bringing that up. We'll ask Tanya when she comes back in. I think she said that there is something having to do with the form and when it translates over, but it should be on these minutes too. She'll be back.
Yeah, but I'm gonna ask her to approve, you know, make.
Okay, say it, okay. Anyone else? Anything? Okay. So go ahead and answer. I move to improve the minutes. Thank you. Someone like to second that? Thanks, Deanna. All in favor? The next item on the agenda is the approval of the expenditures, the prepaid checks, seven three two one four to seven three two one eight, totaling $6,154.04, and the marked warrant checks, seven three two one nine seven three three one zero, totaling $169,332.98. Any questions on the expenditures? Now, would someone like to make a motion to approve them? Teri, all in a second. Thanks, Carol. All in favor? Next is the approval of the financial reports, the prepaid checks report, and March warrant summary sheet, the budget report, and the income report. There anything, anyone? Comments or questions about, for some reason, this month, the warrant checks are too tiny? I think that's two. No?
No, they, they are.
They are small, yeah, okay. If no one has questions, would someone like to make a motion to approve the financial reports? Teri, in a second? All in favor? My report, I don't have anything to note in my president's report. I have some updates of other things down farther in our agenda for today. Public comment? Correspondence, communication? The only thing I would share in correspondence and communication is we had something from someone from a patron with concerns about the accessibility handicap spaces in the parking lot. And that is down farther in new business for us to discuss. Thank you.
I didn't know if there were questions about a RIT report and a lot of, what's in my report is part of the down agenda for, for action, so I don't really want to talk about it now, or do we want to wait? But the big thing was our kickoff meeting with the contractor and the architect for the elevator project. And we're having that, our time, now that elevator is going to be expensive, basically from January to mid- So.
July.
I'm sorry, from July. January, that's even longer.
Yeah, right.
I think in the beginning, from July 1st to about November 15th is what they're predicting will be the downtime for the elevator. That's to give them time. That's not even the manufacturing lead time, that's the demolition and installation time.
Is that going to be the case with any of the vendors? We went with any of the contractors?
We had to go with people who did on the project, so I don't know if it would have been different with, with somebody else.
I thought we had three people that did on the project.
Contractors.
Contractors.
Right, but who did on the, who did on the contract. I expected this is the elevator that was spec'd, that they- But we knew that it was going to be an substantial run of time.
No matter.
No matter, no matter what, but I think, learning that, and they say they built into the padding, so it may be shorter than that, but as I mentioned in my experience, a construction project is never finished.
Yeah, no, it's terrible.
So we are, as I said in my report, strategizing for ways to continue to serve the public and accommodate the people who work here, who might currently need access to, to the elevator to figure it out, accommodate the working situation and the service situation.
Don't you have another little elevator somewhere? I know.
Yeah, what we have is a- What we have is kind of an industrial lift at the loading dock where people can get from great, you know, more, really want passengers on it. It's not gonna, Teri. When you say, it's, yes, it's not, not, not really built for, it's built for freight. It's not even really over that. It's not enclosed in any way. It's got a chain operating by bus up and down. It's very accurate, I guess, yeah.
Charges fee for the amusement ride.
So.
Just to let you know about upcoming personnel changes, I think you probably all got some notification that Sarah Dallas is retiring tomorrow. There will be a bunch of a couple of focus groups with sales directors who will be certain to start getting some, what are the qualities we might be looking for and also very important word is a name that someone who might have heard who is the marketing person. That's also resigned to take a job at the state library. It's early last week, so they have some pretty big- And I hope you had a chance, and some of this may have been to you, but to see the enumeration here of some of the professional accomplishments and contributions back to the profession, some of our understaffed. It makes me feel a little bit, but just to see how, the ways that we're giving back to the profession. To our professional. I appreciate it, having that list. It was very impressive.
Before we take any questions, for, I just circled back. Tanya, I had Teri take over so we can fill you in on who made what motions for the first part of the agenda.
Okay.
Oh, you did. Okay, thanks. Okay, appreciate everyone. And the, one of the things that people are questioning, which I know that you mentioned before, is about having the attendance on the actual minutes of the, what board trustees are here or not. It's not, it's, I think you said it shows up online or something, but it's not, we are not seeing it so that we know whether it was accurate that we were present or not. Say, why am I drafting?
Yeah.
Yeah, um. That would be great. Okay, so any questions for Ike? About his report? Jen, is there anything you'd want to highlight?
Just want to highlight that the annual report was submitted, and I had a minor correction that was like, five, it was supposed to be six. So we did very well, so thank you everyone who contributed to it. Especially grateful for Eric and Tanya to get the financial part also to know.
I will note that you just what I submitted. You've seen my writing, and I can't type without making a typo. So that is a very accomplished.
Alright, does anyone have questions for Jen? Also, the, the little visual thing you made, 2024?
Yes.
I had a question at the bottom with the library parking.
Yes.
Where it says, residents and business owners get priority parking. Know what that meant? That the business owners, not in our property-
In our school district, get a permit. That's what I meant by that.
That's what I was trying to like squeeze.
Okay, okay. Typing out. I know that it comes across as a little odd.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
Right.
That is my intention at those times.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Don, anything you want to bring our attention to?
Nothing. Super excited. When I got here, I think, three years, or so after I got here, upgraded the phone system. Significant investments in the job. Yeah, the help of sales, but it's coming due again shortly, so I've been, I've been looking at different options, and then probably end up with the cloud solution this time around. So that's, that's not probably for a couple of years, but starting the investigations. It might require upgrades to the network, switches, networks, devices, and things like that, so that's something we're working on in the background.
Are you having questions or comments for John? Trevor is not here. Nothing super special. Really fun break week. The weather tends to be very attractive on whether we're busy or not. Maybe we're super busy. Any questions for?
Laura did a bonfire. So Laura doesn't need your bonfire.
Oh, wasted.
They are battery powered candles, and they're well structured, and there's always dog in the tent when Laura's involved, but she gets to recreate here, and people, people paint them all over this year.
Yeah. Jamie, the only thing I want to draw attention to is the Saratoga Breeds programming started in February for adults, and it was finishing up for youth services too, and between youth services and adults, I feel like it's been, people have been really coming out to the different programs. We are going to have a capstone event, and that is going to be April 5th, that's a Saturday, 3:30 to 4:30. We weren't able to get the author of the book, but we were able to get the narrator for the audio book, and he is really fun, so I think it's going to be a great talk. He's going to join us from Zoom because he's out in LA, and so it'll be a live audience here, and then also on Zoom, so you can join either way. Anyone have any questions or comments for?
You'll see in the report that we were a temporary distribution location for an outdoor locks over station during Chatterfest. Been approached again by the county, so we want to do that on St. Patrick's Day, Comic Con, and during the playtimes with the light, we crawl inside, and so we're inclined to do that. It complements what we do upstairs with other programs, and it's, you know, gets those resources. How it is all available.
So it's just materials?
It's just, yeah, it's essentially the same thing as we have upstairs. It's all the test rooms.
Yeah.
Rather than having it inside the library, because that might have on the sidewalk, you know, where there are crimes.
Okay, I saw the things that you highlighted, and it is, some of the things related to paid scale are on our executive session list for tonight's. It's about that to do with some confidentiality things. If there is anything else there that you would like to send during our public meeting, I'd love for you to.
Yeah, just a comment. You know, the reason why we're pushing hard on this level is, you know, we have a number of staff people that are, we have extremely hard-won, we were short two part-time agents positions all week, and you can only cover so many missing parts, and I'm really afraid, you know, I see some armor cut and stuff that somebody is going to make a mistake in here, and, you know, there's been some close calls. I don't like seeing that. That's two people that work in a massive number of hours, and we're all pitching in. In fact, I used to have to thank Jen, she lives up there, four inches, three inches ice, and you're just chopping for hours, steel shovels, and then you're trying to cover it's inside and outside. It's just almost too much to ask, and there is nobody to call. There is no backup. We're the backup, too. So that is the point.
Well, thank you. And I know we've been thinking about it and talking about it, and so I just wanted to let you know that we're taking it seriously. Anyone have anything else, Rick, script? Kelly, it looks like you have some, I don't see a, just-
Yeah, I know, it's just, just some reservation and requiring more.
And congratulations on passing. Okay, so I am going to go into the mini report piece before we continue with, speaking of speech house about the elevator. The strategic planning committee met last week. We had a principal conversation. Jen has been organizing some of the details and the comments that we gathered in the survey, and all of the different department heads are looking at the current plan and the priorities that were outlined, and we're meeting again next month. It's the next month, right? To continue that, that conversation, and our hope is that we will have some more details organized, and then it is the intention to break Sunday to the board by June, with the hope that the current tweaks. And so part of the conversations we're also around is, are both the, the guidelines and the focus, the focus, oh, guy, right? Still relevant, and people are feeling that that's the case, and, but I think there were some, some good points that were brought up. So that is an update on the strategic planning, and then in relationship, the board was given the document about the branch expansion possibilities that Heather and I worked on together. And what I wanted to say about that is, in that document, we outline, as well as the larger Google Doc, what kind of service areas as a comparison, for example, what Albany has and how many libraries service the patrons of that community. And I wanted to differentiate for our board the difference between what may be a need for a potential second branch versus, or maybe in relationship to whether or not we choose to move forward with it, because I think there isn't a question about the need, really, in terms of how wide and large our service area is, and the comments that we saw in the, both in the survey around accessibility to this building, the issues with the ramp, the issues with people coming into town, but also wanting more services. And so what I am hoping to see is whether or not there is board support to continue the conversations and the researching while the strategic planning is happening, meaning that it, that idea of accessibility, of library's place as convenor of community, all of those things that are highlighted in the strategic plan, that the exploration of whether or not another branch makes sense would be included in those conversations over this next period of time in the strategic plan. So it isn't saying that it will happen, nor is it saying that it won't happen, it's just pulling it in. The other thing that I included in there was some financial proposals. I worked with the data that Ike and the other department heads had put into the document, and I also used some other resources online, including some of what Bethlehem organized for their vote. Bethlehem was, if you aren't familiar with the library expansion that they were trying to do, it's a much, much larger scale. They were looking for over $30 million, but they had, in terms of the costs and things, it was a way for me to see what were they looking at for their bond period, what were they getting as a percentage of a mortgage rate, you know, those kinds of things. And so when those numbers were put in, if we are considering, and these are early numbers, but with construction expenses based on the conversations with architects, opening date collections, annual operating costs, our current budget is $5.36 million, and we would then be looking at a potential $800,000 budget for the inclusion of another branch, which, I don't know, this isn't in there, right, Don?
No.
No, I didn't put it in, I didn't put it in our packet. So part of what I did was then looked at, what would the rates increases be? And right now, it would look like a 15 cent rate increase per $1,000 of assessed value in Saratoga Springs. That means a $200,000 property that right now currently pays $198.58 in library tax would add $29.79 per year to their tax bill. A $300,000 property would have an increase of $44.68 per year, and a $450,000 property would have a $68.02 increase per year. Wilton and Greif Field have different rates than Saratoga Springs, which has to do with rate calculation and New York State process that equalizes because properties are assessed differently in different communities. And so if you looked at Wilton, they would have an increase of 10 cents per $1,000 of assessed value instead of 15 cents. And so their rate is, it would go up $20.18 for a $200,000 property, $30, a little over $30 for a $300,000 property, and about $45 for a $450,000 property. And then there's details in there about what some of the hopes are, what some of the locations are that everyone is looking at. And so what I'm looking for from the board, which we discussed last month, was a potential motion that would just allow the research and conversations and discussions to continue during the strategic planning here. Not necessarily that it's happening.
Make that motion. Zooming in on the conversation. Tammy, with this, the strategic plan. Exactly. It looks like it's all focused on acquiring some land. I'm sorry, is it, is it just focused on acquiring land and building a new building? Or, I mean, are you, is there a consideration being given to, you know, other ideas, like, you know, partnering with somebody, or maybe renting a space and renovating it?
All of the, yeah, all of those things have been, have been part of the conversation, and the realtor that we've spoken to has looked at, exposed all those options. The partnering conversations are something that would be ongoing, and interestingly, with changes at Sals potentially, it may, you know, I, I don't know whether then some of those conversations would change with whether or not they would be interested. There's still, we haven't had conversations with this senior center folks is another person that's, that some suggested. Ike has had conversations with the Crandall Library because of this piece of them, their services reaching down below into, towards Moreau, and some of these underserved and unserved pieces. The, the part with renovation has to do with some of whether or not, what would start as the space, and whether it could then be financially, how much it would make sense of being compliant with all the requirements that the library would need for infrastructure of IT or accessibility, and part of what people were hoping for is a home for outreach services, since we don't have storage here for outreach, nor do we have a real storage space for the van. And so part of the imagining potential construction had to do with those things, and also there are some people, some community groups who are looking for some more archival storage, and so that was another potential partner to build some storage that would be in partnership, be potentially in partnership with others.
Yeah, so, I mean, I may be the only person on this board that isn't, sorry, doesn't live in Saratoga Springs. And being a little Tony, like, I, I know that my mortgage is not, particularly high on what payment I have. And I guess what I'm thinking is, is there another way to do this, or, or address some of these needs in a less expensive way? You know, obviously not everybody wishes to be rented. You know, like, just starting here. This building doesn't meet maybe all the needs, but like, I think it would be like, what can be done to this building? Fix some of the needs, like, what could make it more accessible to, you know, old people, you know, things like that, like, all that would cost money, but it wouldn't cost this amount of money.
Right.
Or even the rent on a short-term basis, it might require an investment of the library to, to- of the library to, to, to make a space. I'm, you know, whatever, and that, that space might be used for, you know, one or two years. But if you do that and have a space like that, then you're kind of demonstrating to the community and ourselves that this space is necessary, or if it is necessary, and, and, and maybe have the people realize this is really the thing in their lives.
Yeah. And I don't think, I would not say that, that actually conversations around land or property have actually not been the complete focus. What's been the focus is imagining things, both what you said of, of what isn't being served, serviced here. What, part of it is also, like I said, is it's just an enormous service area. So if, if you take Albany as that example, and so each branch in Albany, seven branches are servicing around fourteen thousand people. And we have one branch servicing over fifty thousand people. If you just do that simple math, there are ninety nine thousand people in the, in the Albany district. There are seven branches of libraries in Albany. So part of the conversation has been, do we know who we aren't servicing? Do we know, you know, Pat, who was here or somebody, each, each, each branch person would share elements around where we are, who comes downtown, who doesn't want to come downtown? And, and are there other parts of the service areas that we could need, which is part of what they're doing with the outreach van as well? The fact that we have the, the issue of accessibility to this building, as far as I know, is not is every way that has been discussed, it's not fixable. We can't get rid of the ramp, we can't put easily some kind of lift at the bottom of it to take you up to the top of it. And
There's space on the side that may create another entrance.
When you've spoken with the architects?
None of the spaces are at great
Yeah, those are not at great either.
There's not one single entrance to this building, which is like it doesn't require you to go upstairs to it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You have to get there first.
But I don't think, I know it may seem as though that it's been, that, that everyone's been sitting around in a space just dreaming big and I can assure you that has not been the experience, that at least my experience in the committee, it's been really around and also open enough, it, it doesn't even make, doesn't even make sense. I think I was surprised though that when I started putting the numbers into the formula with it being on the, on the more expensive side, it, it's not, it's even, even if that's where they landed, they are enormous asks of taxes. Something that is thirty or forty dollars a year doesn't, at a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, doesn't seem to me like a, a, a deal breaker. It, it could have been, I was, I was prepared for, you know, what is this going to really potentially look like? And it doesn't, it, it, we have no idea where that would land. That isn't, it isn't, it isn't the, right now, it isn't a committee's place, I don't think, to decide that this is how much we have. I think we're still in the question of, does it make sense? Are there other things that make more sense to the partnerships? And investing in more partnerships make more sense? It's more just a conversation of, do we even keep having the conversation?
I think we should continue the conversation, absolutely. I do see the value in Frank's suggestion about a demo project, if you will, for a year or two. And because you get more buy-in from people if it's valuable to them.
Right.
Because I, I don't know, I mean, I should, you know, and it was a long time ago, but, you know, yes, that's not a lot of taxes, but there's an awful lot of people who don't even use the library or anything. Don't see it as a valuable service.
Right, there are, to me, is that there'll be some really interesting questions if we did something like that, but we haven't raised taxes and we don't have a bond to do it. Now we have to figure out how we're going to afford another location with staffing needs and something that we are renting, but we haven't asked the taxpayers for any, any buy-in to that process. We don't have, necessarily have their support. So financially, that may be trickier to do. Because where are those resources coming from? We have money in savings, but do we want to use up potentially all of the savings to see if people like it or not, depending on where it is? So we've still been just commenting, this is gathering information for, for Screenfield, Wilton and Saratoga. The, the planning process, the parking requirements, you know, we're just still gathering all of that, all of that data.
Going back to your question about should we continue, it feels to me like there's many, many questions. And it feels like we do have a survey that people responded to. And it feels like maybe when you do the strategic planning, part of that would be looking at how to lead with our current resources meet these additional goals, which would be the alternative to requesting more money. And so maybe it's like, I don't see how you can separate the two things because you're dealing with you identified already.
Right.
So you've got it included, it's and not I don't think.
Yeah.
But in any case, I feel like it means that we should need to continue to research more. It feels like we're not saying no, but we're not saying this is the way either.
Right. I, I don't think anybody is to that. I don't think, I don't think anybody is, is to that, is to that place who sits on the committee. I have never heard that from anybody. I think that, that, that there, everyone's trying to be really thoughtful about all of those possibilities. But it is helpful to have some things that are concrete a little bit to, to work with. We, we, we need, we need, you end up needing something that gives you a little bit of visualization around it of in terms of location, in terms of renovate, and, and it's, and it's also sometimes, I think, it's what becomes available. Someone all of a sudden gifted us a huge amount of land and said, I want you to build another library, right? I mean, you never like, that's a different, that's a different scenario than someone who says, hey, I happen to have this empty building and I'm interested in doing a pop-up here and, you know. So is there, did the board have any particular questions about the document itself that I can answer for you? No?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to look through the document.
Okay.
I couldn't, it got blocked or at one of my work.
Okay. Okay.
For, since it looks like a summary of
Yeah, it's more, it's, it's a more of a summary and, okay. So would someone, are you comfortable with, with someone making a motion that we continue the conversations as a part of strategic planning?
And you did.
Are we still comfortable with that? And if so, would someone like to second that motion? Thanks, Jean. All in favor? Okay. The next unfinished business, the land sale. We do have a signed contract. Yay.
We know what the next step
Yes. No, what we, what we did is Stephanie asked them to just hold it in their attorney's escrow account. I did sign a document last week that was for a lot adjustment with the city. So it's my understanding that that process has begun. They did agree with an April thirtieth deadline as a closing that the fence will be up by May fifteenth. If the fence is not up by May fifteenth, there is a five hundred dollar per day fine. And they are aware that if it that we will also, if for some reason the closing doesn't happen or whatever, that we will likely put up temporary fencing on our property line in the, during spring. All right?
We have, we have seen this appearance here, doing a survey of the UTEC.
Okay. Great. Do you know that happened, that they, like, we were sitting there thinking it wasn't happening and then the next, shortly after that?
Yeah, I kind of made, we kind of made, yeah, that's made a little, made it a little bit clearer that like, this was, then we were kind of done, so. Moved along, moved along within a couple of days after that, yeah. The elevator upgrade replacement is, document is attached here for you all to see. And as Ike mentioned, the staff are busy looking at all the different scenarios around summer programming, spaces, offices, staffing needs. So probably next month, we'll have more of an update on what that looks like.
It's interesting, we, we did your point, Frank. One of the conversations we had was maybe this is the time to try a pop-up branch at the Wilton Mall with a storefront.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that, yeah.
So, but, but we don't know if that addresses any of our issues about accessibility, because it's a mile from the parking lot to anywhere that's inside the mall.
Right.
And what does it cost to fit up an empty storefront?
Yeah.
It's something that
It would be interesting, it would be interesting, as imperfect as that would be looking to me, it wasn't a great idea, but, but, but to have some kind of you know, gauge that what the need is, what the use would be, what people are interested in.
We also, we had lots of conversations about pots and containers coming out here or programs and, yeah, all, all kinds of
Sure, your imaginations were
Oh, yes, the imaginations are, are
Anybody else at the school?
Oh, yeah.
Right. The budget goal and trustee election.
This is just, I'm going to remind you of two things. One is that petitions are now available for candidates. We've got one as far as I know. And and I'd like to get on the calendar, a budget workshop, obviously working away at a budget.
Okay.
A date on the calendar for the board to maybe hear from the auditors about the financial report I shared.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we talk about that at the end of our meeting? And then we can send a couple of dates to Heather, since she's not here right now by email. On new business, we have some policy updates, the library counts and circulation of library materials policy. Do you want to just go through, just briefly, Ike?
Basically, the highlights, a lot of cases prompted by departure from, from the joint operation. So we had a lot of language in our policy that said people that expect to be counted. But that's not true in the street, you can get a card, but
Yeah.
So we eliminated that, just talked about the joint automation members. A few other bits that have changed since the policies first implemented is that we we had a practice prior to the pandemic, before we eliminated open D cards of setting excessive people to collections. We don't do that anymore, so we just removed that language from the policy. There was a category of card for internet moves only if people had trouble proving residence, senior identity. Internet, but that was at a time when it, when the library card was required for, for the control, access, the printing to computers, and that's the one that's necessary. So those are, those are
So then I would like to make a motion to approve the library counts and circulation of library materials policy. Someone like to second that? Hi. She, she might have got a split second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Next is the patron code of conduct policy.
So the, the two major changes here is that we have in our meeting room policy an explicit prohibition, not solicitation and selling things. But we didn't have it called out with this degree of explicitness in the code of conduct, so we just had that said, selling things in addition to asking for petition of microproperty. Okay? And then just clarifying and streamlining our rules around when children are allowed to be at the library without
Okay.
Essentially, our new guidelines are maybe a little bit clearer that, that middle school aged kids are, they're okay to be in the library on their own. And anywhere younger than that, they need to have somebody who's twelve to be charged. And that no matter if you're alone or with another charge, we're never in the good progress. Parents are always responsible.
Do we have a lot of issues with that?
The biggest issue was, I think, staff having a hard time remembering the, because the previous policy had like three levels of and I would say it's probably less a problem now than years ago, but it's, it's generally more people with little ones that they want to leave them in the treehouse room and they go do other things. And it's, I, I really, I see way less problems with like an eight-year-old, like it's redder. It's usually the little ones being in the same room, clarifies they've got quantifiable space.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve the new patron code of conduct. Someone like to second that? Yes, Carrie, all in favor? And then the parking lot, library parking lot regulations. As I said, we had a question from someone around that does need handicap accessible spaces. The particular concern from patron had to do with the fact that they have a child who works with one of the service agencies around the area and they use their own vehicles. So this person was, is not a resident and the people who work are not residents. So therefore their cars can't be permitted. It is not, we it is not an issue around ADA compliance. We are compliant with our lot in that it requires a permit. That is, we are allowed to have that. It is also, though, one of the issues that circulation staff deal with the most where patrons are upset that they can't use our handicap spaces because they aren't eligible for a permit or aren't necessarily eligible for a permit. The, so one question is going to be working with the police department around how much they enforce the handicap accessibility spaces. But this change was to indicate that if you are someone who needs to use a space, regardless of whether or not you meet the criteria to have a permit to park in our lot, you can use those handicap accessible spaces. But you must have, from the Department of Motor Vehicles to the Police Department, that paragraph that indicates that you are someone who is, is using handicap services to have that accessibility. We are not going to get into, it's too far for me to walk, I want to park in your handicap spaces, or any other scenario. They have to have that either on the license plate or where it hangs, you know.
And they have to have a, a permit to, a handicap.
Exactly.
But so, so they have to come in, so Mike, so then they have to come in the library.
No.
No.
So, so the change was originally our, our rules were that all, every space in the parking lot
Right.
required a permit. And so this change that we're requesting is that every space in the parking, it required a library permit. So this is that every space still requires a permit, but those accessible spaces require a permit from the GMP and not necessarily one from the
So, so should this, should this say? So, so should this, should this say or is reserved for library park, parking lot permit holders or vehicles parking?
So you're saying that that first, that first Or
Or, right.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's a, that, that makes sense. What it doesn't do is allow people who are not eligible for a library permit. But have a have accessible permit to park in any space that's not one of those
Oh, alright, so they can't park in the lot with their handicap sticker on the car. And so they, so in this kind of scenario, it still could be the case that someone works with um like people with Saratoga Bridges, some of the organizations, the library has already worked this out with them. But in other cases, it is possible that someone would have a level of disability that does not give them that DMV placard, um, or for whoever it is that's driving that person. But that, then again, really doesn't become an issue for the library to assess or address.
Right.
They, 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 it, there has to be a, a line around how you evaluate whether or not someone can be in those handicap spaces. And that feels like that is a legal issue with the police and DMV, not the library.
And the police will enforce whatever we say the rules are, so.
Right, okay.
It's similar to a situation like the nanny situation, where you've got a nanny who might have a charge who lives within the school district, but drives that charge in their personal vehicle and native outside of the district. So they will be eligible for a permit even though their client
Yeah.
If that child were old enough to have a car registered, like, would be eligible for a permit. It's based on the vehicle, not on the passenger.
Right. Anyone have questions about this? So do you see what's, so the issues?
I see the issues, but it's sort of like, we will not, uh, give them a ticket if they're handicapped and using those spots.
That's correct.
Right, but
But that person could be anywhere also.
They could be, yes, they could be, yes, services. And they may not be just, they may not be even residents of
They're very, they're very likely not to be. This is the clause, and they're wishing they're parking in those.
Yes.
I mean, they'll still be limited by time.
Right, but, but they definitely could be coming from Flitton Park or Blunt's Falls or Albany or whatever.
So I wonder whether that really answers the question of the person who's receiving services here.
It doesn't, that's
It doesn't, it doesn't at all.
Separate issue, but these two, those
But they, but they, they were questioning our compliance with ADA, which we are compliant, so.
Yeah, I was never worried about that.
So that, that, that was, that was clear. And at the same time, it is one of the things that is the hardest for circulation staff. When you have people who are struggling with their mobility to the extent that they have this placard. And that we are having to say no because they don't happen to.
You're talking about this thing that hangs too, temporary.
Exactly, right. So it, so it doesn't address the situation that we're talking about, but that's what we get frequently, is somebody who does have the license plate or the placard who lives outside of the district. And then the way that they qualify for a library permit is to join the friends of the excellence society.
And it's, and they could be, in this case, that we don't know, that the person who's receiving um, aid services, or I can't remember which, which services, they may then have that placard. I don't, I don't, they may, they may, or they may not, but, um.
And, and the, and the reason these things are getting inflated is because we had two communications from people, I said, our clients of a, one was about the accessibility and then to the, to those spaces, the other was about accessibility to the park. So it was two different questions, which kind of
How many parking spots are there?
There are four. So there are two, are there two beds accessible?
Yeah, only two beds exist.
You have more handicap parking here than Right, and, and this honestly is the biggest pain point for library staff, when we have to say no to people about parking. People with this, with this need for accessibility.
So are you, um, are all of you okay with making this policy change?
So would someone like to make a motion? Yeah, I feel better if they had to come in the library, but we don't expect that of anyone that parks right there, so.
Right.
Almost always it's people who are coming to the library. I mean, we, actually, we've never heard of people that don't want to come to the library, who can't park.
That's great.
And honestly, I think if forced into those spots, the police just
Yeah, you're watching.
Except they're, if they're displaying
Well, maybe they deserve the spot or something, or serve mail.
Um, okay, so would someone like to make a motion to improve that policy change in the parking lot regulations? Thank you, Carrie. And a second? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Um, okay, I would like to make a motion to move into a second session. We discuss some of the matter and the personnel matter.